Research and innovation to order. We will take up one action item for approval. Action item one A is the approval of the minutes of the May 28, 2024 meeting. I move the approval of action one A. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? That item passes. With no other action items on the agenda, we will move on to an information item. At our last meeting, we introduced to the committee Associate Vice Chancellor and University Vice Provost for Research, Rosemarie Wesson, who assumed her role in December 2023. Dr. Wesson presented the Office of Research Report, including details about its mission, vision, and priorities. As we celebrate its 10th anniversary, today's meeting will focus on the innovative and impactful work accomplished at the Advanced Science Research Center, or the ASRC, which I always mess up. So if I do it wrong, ASRC. In the core areas of environmental science, nanotechnology, neuroscience, photonics, and structural biology. The ACRC is part of the Graduate Center, is located on the City College campus, and serves all of CUNY. Associate Vice Chancellor and University Vice Provost for Research, Rosemarie Wesson, will lead off today's meeting, and we will then hear from Graduate Center President, President Josh Brumberg, and two co-presenters who serve as directors at the ACRC. Rhine, is that right?
Rhine.
Rhine? Rhine? Uline?
Uline, it rhymes.
Yeah, well, okay. Rhine? Well, that rhymes with R. And nanoscience, and Jia Lu, I guess, in neuroscience. So, go ahead.
So, thank you guys for coming. As was stated earlier, I can't believe the ASRC opened their doors in 2014. It's been 10 years. So we thought this would be a great opportunity for some of the ASRC researchers to talk about the research. But what I will say is that, as most of you know, the ASRC is a major research enterprise, and it serves the New York metropolitan area. One of the things that I like most about the ASRC is that it links national researchers with top researchers at other campuses throughout CUNY. So, the idea when ASRC was formed was that it was a source of collaboration. So that's what we want to talk about today, is the collaborations that are going, taking place at the ASRC, and the state-of-the-art facility, which was designed for collaboration and is being used for collaboration. So, I'll turn it over to Josh and...
And how do I get to the slides?
Roberto's gonna help you right now.
Scientists can't give talks without the slides.
We know that.
Okay. And where are they gonna appear?
He gave you the remote, and now he's gotta switch.
We've worked on mind control.
One of the new projects.
Yes. Okay. So this, if we were sitting at 135th Street instead of here on 42nd Street, would be the beautiful view you see in the front of the Advanced Science Research Center, which as Trustee O'Donnell Torme mentioned, has five interrelated research areas. And I listed them there, starting on the top floor, environmental science, they get the best view, neuroscience, structural biology, photonics, and nanoscience. And I'm, at the bottom, I list core facilities, which is one of the points that Associate Vice Chancellor Wesson was making. It is a resource for all of the CUNY-verse. So, we were founded on these four principles that were enumerated by former Vice Chancellor Gillian Small. One is to foster innovative interdisciplinary research across those five areas, provide state-of-the-art research facilities, not only for the faculty within that building, but the faculty across CUNY and then across the metropolitan area, and then try to create alliances with scientists across CUNY, across the region, and across the world, and also remember that we are embedded within a public university within New York City, and to have outreach to the community which we live in. This is kind of like, I like to put the slides, the level of analysis. We span 17 orders of magnitude, looking at the movement of side chains of molecules up to things on the scale of the Earth and everything in between. And this, of course, is just in a distance scale. We could put up the same type of graph for the temporal scale. I'll point out that photonics thing, not to explain it, but except to Shay, say that is a diagram of a cloaking device. And so for all us administrators, it's something that we want to get the cloak of invisibility. Unfortunately, it only works with three wavelengths of light, so we're still working on making it a little thicker. The ASRC, as was mentioned, is in our 10th year, and really been an incredible success. We've trained over 500 students and post-docs. Here at CUNY, we have had over 1,000 peer-reviewed publications in some of the most prestigious. I point out, these five were one from each initiative of cover, and in general, in science, if you have one name, it's a more prestigious journal, and these are some of the most prestigious in the world. And it was not easy for me to pick just one cover. Most initiatives have had 30 or 40 cover articles in their 10 years. They've received over 330 external grants totaling greater than $130 million to support the research mission. I point out four, and it's not necessarily that you need to know the specifics, but these are all collaborative grants. While 10 years ago, CUNY might have been a partnering institution, in all four cases, CUNY here is now the leading institution. And I think that's something that the ASRC and their researchers really have changed the idea of what CUNY research means to our ecosystem. One of the things that Vice Chancellor Wesson made the point at is that we want to be a resource to the CUNY-verse. We've used some of our funds, over a million now, for 74 different faculty across CUNY have received these grants. They vary in amounts because we've tried different ways to engage across 13 campuses. We also have a very active grant workshop program that we have dated that has brought in over $14 million of additional research to CUNY faculty not based at the ASRC. So that's through the NSF Career Bootcamp, which is the top early career award that NSF offers. As I mentioned, the core facilities, we have 15 of these, and we'll be hearing from one of the core facility directors in a second, but they provide state-of-the-art facilities. It wouldn't be possible to build one of these facilities at each and every campus across CUNY. So the idea was to create these cores at the ASRC. Each one is directed by a PhD-level scientist that works not only to maintain the facility, but also to do outreach and teach CUNY investigators. And some of these are unique to the New York City ecosystem. We have the largest clean room for nanofabrication in New York City, and we also have the only true anechoic chamber in the metropolitan area. And as of today, we're bringing in about $1.8 million in additional revenue that offsets some of the costs. One of the things we're also very much involved in this is training the next generation of science workers and working with companies that are trying to innovate. So we were very fortunate, receive a, what is it, $8 million grant, $10 million grant?
It's nine.
Nine million dollar grant from New York State Economic Development Corporation for the Center for Advanced Technology. And the idea there is to work with budding companies, provide them for funds to pilot their ideas in our core facilities, plus we have work on helping them create their business plans, and we've now worked with over 30 companies to do just this. And we have also a National Science Foundation Research Training Program to involve our doctoral students, letting them also learn about entrepreneurship. And we've created a class that brings together Rhine as a chemist and the head of the Entrepreneur Center at Baruch, a businessman, so they get to hear the both, the best from both sides of that equation. As I said, it's very important to us that we share the latest ideas, the latest science that happens at the ASRC and with our community, which is West Harlem. And although we had a large dip and went virtual during COVID, we have over, now over 2,000 middle and high school students from West Harlem in the New York City area meet, come every year. This is our hands-on exhibition space. They meet our educator, and they meet one of our scientists, so they can believe one day that they too can become a scientist and come to CUNY to learn about science. Oh, what's, what's the wrong address?
I think this one was in there twice.
Oh, oh.
I saw that too.
And now, at the end, I'm gonna now pass on to Rhine Uline, who is an Einstein Professor of Chemistry. His tenure line is at Hunter College. He's a member of the PhD programs in chemistry and biochemistry at the Graduate Center, and he's the founding director of the Nanoscience Initiative at the ASRC. And then he's gonna pass down the clicker to Gia Lu, who's a Research Associate Professor in the Neuroscience Initiative, and she's the Core Facility Director for Epigenetics and Road and Behavior Analysis, and she's gonna tell us a little bit about the epigenetic facility. So I turn it over to Rhine.
Thank you, Josh. Yeah, it's a great pleasure to be here. So, thank you to Trustee O'Donnell for the good introduction. My name is always tricky. So what I usually tell people, it's Rhine, like the river, and then Uline rhymes with my first, so it's even, I'm from the Netherlands, it's a strange name there, too. But I usually start by telling people how I got involved in this. So I was based in the UK, and my career was going really well. And then I was 39 at the time, and I got a call from CUNY if I was interested to come and take a look at this new center they were building, and I, and it was in New York City. And I thought, well, don't know much about CUNY, I know about New York City, I'll come and take a look. But I had no plans to go anywhere, but I had breakfast with then-Vice Chancellor Small, and she explained the vision to me. And then in the afternoon, I had a hard hat tour of the facility. Tour, which was, the building was about 90% complete. So knowing the vision, seeing the infrastructure and learning about CUNY, I, at the end of that tour, I called my wife, and she could tell from my voice, she said, "I'll be moving." And I said, "I think we might be," and now I'm here. It's been an incredible journey. It's been hard to build a top-tier research center within, you know, the largest urban public university in the country. It's been hard, but it's also been incredibly rewarding. And I think the reason, the most important reason to do it is to get New Yorkers excited about STEM and to get like way, way more diverse students into STEM careers at all levels. And so that's what we're doing. So let me, let me very quickly, so this is just to say something about our research. We're inspired by biology. Biology can do incredible things. The best and most efficient computers in your head, you know, if you think about the eyesight of eagles, it's better than the cameras we make. So in other words, biology can do incredible things. It's inherently degradable, sustainable, et cetera. So why don't we build, learn how to build like biology? Why don't we take inspiration from the processes and the building blocks of biology to make anything and everything? So it's a bold vision, but we live in a really exciting time now because biology ultimately uses only a few dozen molecules to do all this, a few dozen building blocks. It's like a language or like a code. You're all familiar with DNA, the next level is the structural pieces, proteins and things like that. It's also a code, and now with AI and automation, we are actually in a position to potentially figure out this problem so that we can, you know, make things not, no longer based on petroleum like we do now, but based on how biology does it. It's incredibly exciting and really the right time to do things like that right now. And this is just to show what we've built. I mean, I'm very proud of this personally. I came in, you know, all my own in the giant building, and there's five equivalents of me, five directors, and we built a very, very successful and really friendly and fun environment for people to come and do science. I don't want to bore you with all the details. The slides are really there if you want to take another look, so they are a bit full, but that's deliberate, so there's a lot of information. But the key messages here are really that we are, we're serving, of course, within the SOC, we have a lot of users, but we also have, you know, Columbia, NYU, we really serve the city, and we serve the region, and we serve CUNY first and foremost. So the, imagine a really dynamic environment where people come in, use some of the equipment that you can't find anywhere else, and then go back home to their home campus. But also, we have real stories of people actually coming from MIT and use the facilities and going back to their home university because there is no other building like this, and I would believe anywhere on the planet. Certainly MIT and Harvard don't have this. They have everything we have, but it's not in one building. It's across a very much larger region. So it's incredibly attractive for people to come and work with us. So Josh already mentioned the CAT program. So this is New York State-funded. We are, it's two, two times five years, so four and a half million per year. And what it does, it basically connects what we do, the science to industry and to companies. And we're, the 30 companies that George mentioned, many of them are actually startups, and some of them may go really far. So New York City is becoming a really, really popular place now as an alternative to Boston to start your company. And that's because it's not as competitive yet as Boston. We do have funding nearby from Wall Street, and we now have the infrastructure to really propel some of these companies into the stratosphere. And it's early days, but we're seeing more and more of this. Over the last 10 years, I've really seen this go from, can New York become a leader in tech and biotech, to, you know, now seeing all these new buildings going up across the city to enable this. And it's, I think, really important that CUNY is an important part of this, especially because, you know, entrepreneurial students can come from anywhere. They're not, they don't have to be Ivy League, far from it. In fact, the, some of the kids are immigrants are incredibly, you know, are the ones that can really make this happen. So we're excited to work with our students and work with the region.
So are you gonna say anything about the, back in one...
Yeah, sorry.
About the Martians over there on the right side, the clean room?
Yeah, that's perfect to get to the next slide. So I'll give you just one example. We have a million of them, and I clearly don't have time for that, but one example is, everybody's familiar with the CHIPS Act, the Chips in Science Act, the idea of bringing semiconductor manufacture back to the US. And then, and there's enormous amounts of money have been plowed into that, New York State being a leader in this. Global Foundries is a company a few people have heard of, but actually you all have it in your pocket, the chips in your phone. Some of them are most likely made at Global Foundries Upstate. And Global Foundries are tripling their capacity, and they need actually a workforce to do the jobs. So we connected the dots, and we now have a connection with them where our students can basically get summer job opportunities. And this is community college students, so this is an example where the SOC goes far beyond just the graduate programs. And, you know, so, and this is a completely win-win situation where our students are quite happy to go upstate if it's for good six-figure salaries coming straight out of community college. And that's what it looks like, and there's gonna be a lot of these jobs coming in the next decade. So we facilitate that, and we, I'm just, just long quotes, and I'm not gonna read, but the point is the students love this, and it's scalable, and we're doing more of this. These are some of the companies we work with. As I mentioned, a lot of them are very small that you've never heard of, and other ones are well-established, like Carl Edison, and everything in between. And we hope that some of these will become really big, and that would be something we very proud of. And then the other program I wanna talk about is, again, super dense slides, so don't worry too much about that. But this is really about rethinking PhD education. Again, having a brand-new building, 10 years being kind of still new, providing an opportunity to really rethink what PhD education looks like. You know, the reality is that nine out of 10 grad students do not go into academia, and this is actually what we prepare them for typically. So we're catering to the 90%, and basically talk about, you know, professional development, career opportunities. What about patenting and starting a company instead of just focusing on papers and the thesis? And this is very attractive to, you know, students and to us, it's fun. We connect with, as Josh mentioned, we connect with Baruch, where they know the entrepreneurship piece. And so a lot of exciting new opportunities there for our students. And we're really doing something quite unique there that I'm super proud of that we've done this. And this is, it's a true CUNY-verse activity. If you look at that map, that's our interpretation of the subway map. New Yorkers know this completely wrong, but we use this. And you can see the point there. There's pockets of excellence throughout the CUNY-verse, and, you know, with the MetroCard, students can navigate the whole thing. And we really, I believe, have created a very special community of now, you know, bio-inspired researchers. And I really believe that we're not lying, that we're one of the leading activities in the country in this area, and it's an area that's growing. And we're doing this, you know, in a public university with incredibly diverse student population. So I think it's something very special and precious. It is also something that's currently NSF-funded and not renewable, so this is one of our main issues, how do we keep this going? So that's, and then, these are just, again, quotes that you can, took your own time, but the students really feel it. They're excited, they're smiling, they're coming in with large numbers to our events. And, you know, I think it's important for me to share that this is going on. It's a very collaborative activity. I think it's where CUNY is really at its best, operating like a system role that, you know, the sum is way more than the pieces. And I think that's all I have. I'm gonna hand over to Gia.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. And I think, so my name is Jia Lu, and I'm sorry, I think Josh picked the two difficult names to me represented here. So I'm a direct, right now, a Research Associate Professor, and I'm also overseeing two core facilities that are currently housed in ASRC. I guess to carry the way that Ryan's speaking, I'm gonna talk a little bit about myself first. So I have my PhD in neuroscience in training, and then after my PhD, I went to Mount Sinai to have my postdoc experience there, again, in neuroscience and in epigenetics. And then after that, I was, my goal was to start my independent lab and doing independent research. And then my director right now, Dr. Patricia Costaja, who is the Director of the Neuroscience Initiative here at ASRC, presented me this opportunity where I could come to ASRC in 20, that was 2017, where I essentially could build a core facility from scratch. We toured the area, it was empty floor, only lab benches, nothing. And then she presented me this opportunity for being able to build a core facility from scratch and being able to continue my own independent research. And I thought that was pretty cool, although it's kind of new to me and very strange to me because I've never built something from scratch, especially a core facility perspective. So I still remember those days that we were, I was looking at how can we modify the room in order to be able to fit my instrument in there? We look at how much heat emission it generates, and then something that I have never thought I would look at one day. But in the end, we built a facility from there in 2017, and it's been seven years since I'm at ASRC. So I'm very proud to be here, sharing my experience as one of the core facility directors. Hopefully, talk a little bit about what we do there to fulfill this CUNY-wide educational as well as research missions. So as Josh talked about, the core facilities is one of the highlights of ASRC. So as core facilities, I think, being able to carry some sophisticated instruments that are usually beyond the capability of acquisition and maintenance of one lab or even several labs, we were able to provide a wide range of services, both basic, advanced, to CUNY and the research communities that are based in the metropolitan area as well as nationwide. And in addition to that, I think, like Josh was saying, we're all PhD-level scientists, so we're also actively doing research in the lab, which allows us to be able to not only knowing the services and knowing the instrument that we are providing and service, we're also keeping up with the research. Because technology, they do evolve, and new technologies become available on a daily basis. So to be able to understand those technologies and even bringing in those technologies and skills to our CUNY researchers and students and faculties, I think having a PhD-level scientist leading each and individual core facilities there is really allowing us to not only providing the services as a resource, but also ourself, our knowledge as a resources to the CUNY faculties and students. I think that's kind of how closely related to, the third bullet point I was saying there is to fulfill our educational missions there as ASRC, because we were able to not train our students, but also provide like workshops and as well as serve as an educational resources to students and faculties who are either newly to, new to the field or seeking some kind of improvements to their existing techniques or projects to their research. So... Okay. So so far, we have 17 core facilities across five disciplines, including one what we call interdisciplinary core. So that is a core that's, I think, most recently being established and being led by two PhD-level scientists from two different disciplines, neuroscience and structural biology. So this is a very close collaborative research building on the expertise of two different disciplines. So each of us have a PhD, and we're PhD scientists by training, and then we have pretty much this data from Mark, our director. We have pretty much worked with all CUNY campuses from our user group base, as well as 25 non-CUNY academic investigators. I know even my own facility will have worked with not only the academic institutions in the New York City area, but also in Arizona, California, and Maryland, and that's a few examples. And in addition to, Ryan was mentioning, there's also industry and startup biotech users who are coming to us. Total, I think, as Josh said, we have been generating one point, over 1.8 million in annual revenue that helped us to offset our operating cost as well as instrument-like service contract cost. So... Okay. So, maybe I hit twice. Okay. So because I'm, as using myself as an example to tell you a little bit of my facility, one of the facility I'm overseeing is called Epigenetic Core Facility. So for those of you who are probably not familiar with epigenetics, it essentially refers to how your behavior and environment or experience could alter the way that your genes will work in your body. So you read, this is one of the, I think, the top cover page of a Time Magazine of, maybe a decade ago, like talking about why your DNA isn't your destiny. So if you think about the DNA sequence, which is a fixed unless you have a mutation in the body, it comes with four basic building blocks. And epigenetics is essentially, oh, I guess my animation is blocked there. So you can think of the, the epigenetics is like the punctuation mark after the DNA sequences. So if you have a mystery book of the DNA codes in your body, the epigenetics is kind of like the bookmark, which tells you which page that you can read and which page you can ignore. And those bookmarks are usually reversible, and they can be added or removed upon the behaviors or the environmental exposure changes in there. So the facility is essentially built on that, so by carrying a lot of different services and instrumentation that could allow researchers to ask those kind of questions. So as I said, the core was established in 2017. As of today, we have 12 different types of instruments, in addition to like online databases and tools which allows the users to interrogate genome-wide data and interpret those with biological meanings. We offer over 30 different types of services, and today we have served over 140 facility users. As you see on the right, we have covered, in addition to ASRC, but also a wide range of CUNY campuses, as well as external academic institutions and non-academic startup and biotechs. And as a resource, we have supported over 100-plus grant submissions as a facility and resources that could be utilized by the investigator, investigators in those grant proposals. And last, to fulfill our educational missions, we have offered a variety range of trainings... we have offered a variety range of trainings such as our, you know, our day-to-day instrument trainings and the weekly, not, like maybe monthly seminars or which are workshops, which would teach like existing users how to improve or additional ways to use our service as well introduce new techniques or databases that they could utilize to analyze their data. And then recently, we had our first user group meeting. This essentially helped building a community type of, a base of approach that users who are doing similar type of research or similar areas of technique could come and share their experience and difficulties when utilizing those. And in that user group meeting, we also launched a pilot grant, which would help the users who just get into the field would be able to subsidize some kind of the cost that they will be in, I guess, incurring in order to use the services to get, to help them get preliminary data, therefore apply for future federal or, or private funding for those. And, and also, we have hosted several undergraduate interns in the core as well as in the lab. And some of them were able to secure jobs after they were completing their interns. As well as, I think, one of my most recent graduate students, undergrad students, he, she was saying that she was thinking of, of going to medical school initially. But now, after having the research experience in the lab, she's really want to go to MD/PhD approach. So really, I guess, giving her passions and to continue to go to research. As in terms of public outreach, we have hosted like open houses for our neighbors, also faculties who would come into our facility to see what kind of services that we have available as well as the field trips in collaboration with ASRC's Illumination Space, who would come and hosted the, the local high school and middle school students who will be able to, you know, essentially knowing kind of, for example, epigenetics, whereas what they usually will learn in textbooks as genetics. But now they will have a new way of learning epigenetics in addition to what they have learned. So really brought them there, I guess, inspire them to, for future experience and research. Okay, but that, I think that is it. I guess we're very happy to take questions and then, where, whatever you wanna know about us.
Well, thank you very much. It's great to hear that. I know I visited the, I'm gonna get it wrong again. I'm gonna look at the.
ASRC.
ASRC. Almost when it was first, it was mostly the, almost an empty building. And I think that, you know, the, the five, the five disciplines hadn't really been hired yet. So it's great to see that it's flourishing. And I guess I have one question. The amount of funding that you've been able to generate, it seemed a little low to me. So I mean, I've, maybe I'm being hard. But I mean, what would be in terms of what would be the expectation? Do you think that that's a, a good level of external funding? Or, you know, in comparison to other institutions which may have?
I, I think you have to think about what the denominator is. We have twenty research groups.
Yeah.
So we don't have as much. And, you know, some have been there from the beginning. Our most recent research group, the director was brought in six years ago and then faculty. So I think we'll eventually get up a little higher. But I think given that number that you're talking twenty PIs.
Twenty PIs.
That's pretty good.
Okay.
And I should say, everyone is externally funded.
If I can just add something to that. I mean, yeah, so we're, in that sense, more comparable to like a, a department.
Department, more of a department, yeah.
And, and then, and then we measure up really well. But the other thing I'd like to say is that we are, after ten years of building a foundation, we are now really looking at the very large grants. So we have, you know, one, that's on the reviews. I don't know what's gonna happen there. And it's a multi-stage process, but it's for a sixty million dollar, what's called an engine led by us. One's going in today for an ERC, which is a, an engineering research center from NSF. Tens of millions of dollars. We were asked to partner with the University of Michigan to be a major partner in that. These big things are happening kind of one after the other. And, and then I think you can, you can take it up a notch. But in terms of, you know, individual PIs bringing in like their half million or, or million-dollar grants, I think we're, it's very hard to do better than what we're doing because we are definitely playing with the, the top.
The overall number that you also, is our hit rate or success rate right now is forty percent.
Great.
When the national average is in the low teens.
You, you talked a little bit about entrepreneurship. And if I can be really crafty, from a viewpoint of the finance committee, are there policies in place, patent policies, other policies, where CUNY benefits on an ongoing basis from some of the successes of the work that's being done at the ASRC?
Yeah, so the CUNY has a well-established patent policy. And just to briefly summarize, fifty percent of any profits after the top has been taken off fees associated with the patent process that CUNY fronts, fifty percent goes back to the PI. Twenty-five percent goes to the department, which the faculty is housed in, and twenty-five percent goes to the university. I, I will say that's a very generous policy for the PI relative to our peers.
And has that begun to generate any significant amounts?
We have patents, some stuff, but we have not got a lot yet for licensing fees, right?
No.
Yeah.
But, but I think, I think, I, I mean, I think that, that's a little bit the, it's a game, right? Like you, 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 you only have to, if you look at Northwestern, the massive investments there have come from one, one blockbuster where they got the IP strategy right. So we have some, you know, I don't wanna, you know, I really believe we have some of the best inventors in the, in, you know, in, in, in their areas in, in our building. Andrea Alu, for example, I mean, he is a serial inventor. And he, and, 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 yeah, he, the, the patent policy or the, the process can, can maybe be improved a little bit. But I think it seems almost unlikely that there won't be anything of great value coming out of this at some point. But it takes time. I mean, we've had, we've had interest in licensing and, but yeah, there's no, there's no, nothing huge yet.
Policy seems fine, but I think you need a tech transfer, a strong tech transfer office. That's.
Rosenrhear meeting about that next week.
I mean, you're, you're doing the patents, you're making, doing the discoveries. And you're patenting them in the right way and you're protecting the university in the right way in terms of that policy. But it's taking those discoveries and having an, an active tech transfer that understands the space and is out there pushing and, 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 you know, marketing this to.
Yeah, one, one hundred percent. And, you know, and I know you, you two are talking, but the, the ASRC doesn't have a, a representative in the building. And I think that, that would, that would help to, to streamline all these processes completely. Completely.
But I always, I hear from every university in the country that the, the tech transfers are always underfunded, there's nobody there, they're too broad, they don't know the specificities of what they're doing. And so I know it's a challenge. It's not just us, right? No. Any other questions? Yes.
I just have one, thank you for the entire presentation, but I wanted to give sort of particular thanks. That has to be the most succinct and accessible definition of epigenetics that I've ever.
Thank you for that. It is a confusing topic. Anything else?
Keep on keeping on.
Well, thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So I guess officially with two more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn the meeting. Second, I guess, all the favor, ah, yes, I've done. Thank you. Thank you.
How are you?